More than just cooking that's happening. For entrepreneurs like Hima Bandia, LA Prep has provided a stepping stone for her dream business of making ghee, a clarified unsalted butter that is used for cooking. It has grown so much that she now has to relocate to another facility, but she is thankful to LA Prep for giving her an opportunity to thrive.
The sense of community that you have of I've been able to help other small businesses grow a little bit and they've been able to help me. There's always someone bigger and better in the building than you that can always, you know, provide a sense of mentorship and support. I know how blessed I am to be in this building and it's just been a great, it's been a great experience here.
So what exactly is LA Prep?
What we do as a facility, as a company, is take the real estate and facilities problem off their table and really free them up to do what they do best, which is make food and sell it.
All these people who are used to working by themselves in the middle of the night will all of a sudden are in a place where they have a lot of like-minded people who can share ideas, they can share contacts, they can share resources and actually be a lot more successful just by virtue of being part of this community.
LA Prep opened in April of 2015 here on Avenue 26 in the Lincoln Heights neighborhood of Council District One and has 54 wholesale commercial kitchens and production space available for rent to local food makers.
Now they've got an opportunity to take that product, that special, unique product that comes from their heart, their family and their family history, they can move that product to market.
Among those success stories is celebrity chef and nutritionist Chef Lala, who provides home delivery food through her company Chef Norish.
I'm a creative type. I don't want to have to deal with all the business end of it. This is a turnkey place. They were super helpful when it came to the permits. Everything was already in place. They customized the kitchen to the way we needed it, with the equipment that we wanted. There's people here, Rob McLaughlin, so I can actually have receiving.
The biggest space has been allotted to LA Kitchen, an enterprise that is helping the community in all rounds.
It's a first of a kind social enterprise in America that takes food that would have been thrown away. And we're focusing a lot on fruits and vegetables that are cosmetically imperfect, but we use those to fuel a job training program so that younger men and women aging out of foster care or older men and women returning from prison can get the skills they need to get great jobs. But what's really important is what we're also trying to do is make sure those men and women prepare meals that go out to nonprofit partners throughout the city.
The 15-week training program teaches students to prepare healthy meals.
Our goal is that we want to get 100% of our graduates working, hopefully on graduation day. But the exciting thing about us is we have a business too, so we'll become a major employer ourselves.
A business model that creates recipes for success for the entire community. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
For more information, you can visit laprep.la. Well, with the holiday season here, shoppers in Canoga Park are urged to take extra precautions to protect their gifts and other valuables. Gil Reyes has more from Westfield Topanga Plaza Mall. Gil?
Well, that is right, Yana. 'Tis the season for gift giving, but also the season for thieves. Last year, the LAPD Topanga Division reported more than 80 incidents of car thefts and burglaries just in this area, but there are things you can do to protect yourself. And just that quick, he's gone like a ghost, the ghost of Christmas present, your presents, because you carelessly left them in your car and in plain sight.
I think people have to be very careful.
The LAPD's Topanga Division getting the word out with these demonstrations showing how quickly thieves can work. This warning is issued to shoppers at the Village Westfield Topanga Plaza. Last year, between Black Friday and New Year's, police say 82 thefts and burglaries from vehicles took place at the mall's parking lot and surrounding areas.
It's an unfortunate reality of the holiday season. It's something that happens all year round, but particularly in the holiday season.
Canoga Park's councilman, Bob Blumenfield, urging people to lock it, hide it, and keep it. A crime-fighting slogan that reminds shoppers to always lock their vehicles, even if they're gone a short time. Park in well-lit areas and hide gifts and other valuables in the trunk if they must remain in the car. Keeping them in plain view might entice thieves.
You will see a very large uniform presence here in all of our shopping areas. Our goal is to keep it safe.
Undercover officers will be patrolling too. Authorities are also urging people to be vigilant in reporting suspicious activity.
And just be more aware of your surroundings.
And those warnings come as the city experiences an overall spike in property crime. Yana?
Gil, thanks. Angelenos working and living in downtown LA now have a new hotspot for food and groceries. A long-awaited health store has made its way to the business hub. Rasha Goel has more.
Whole Foods Market is finally in downtown Los Angeles. The new store featuring its own restaurant and bar is a big improvement in terms of grocery operations in the downtown area.
We've been looking for a good 15 years. When this became available, it was a no-brainer. We feel really lucky to be on Eighth and Grand and it's a great location for us.
In an area where healthy alternatives were limited, customers now have an option.
We really feel that we want to reach out to the offices and the community here. We're going to give access to the best food available to downtown. We feel it's a great fit for us, it's a great fit for the community.
It's also a great fit for vendors like Roy Choi, creator of the gourmet Korean taco truck, Kogi.
Now Scoop and Serve have found a way to keep the quality, improve the ingredients, and then click in the process.
Or for the Boardersons, who supply dragon fruit to the store.
Whole Foods is very picky with its growers, so they look at everything and they review everything, so it's an honor to be able to be part of the Whole Foods family.
We're an organic market and so, you know, I think that the uniqueness comes in that we offer something for everybody.
And something else everyone can smile about is the available parking spaces. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
And they'll also be selling vinyl records. While the LAPD is now in an expansion phase, launching a new police academy training class almost every month. Anna Marcos takes us to the latest graduation and what makes this class so special.
These fresh recruits graduate the LAPD Academy at a difficult time for both police and the communities they patrol, a time when tensions often erupt into violence, but the rookies believe they can make a difference.
It's important for us not to get caught up in everything that's happening right now within the community. It's important for us to just remain true to our morals and our values and the way that we were brought up and to just remember why we started.
I was former military, you know, Marine, and I wanted, I wanted to make a difference on a large scale. Now I want to be a police officer because I still want to be able to make a difference, but at a local level.
And the new cops are well-equipped to make that difference. Asia Hardy was voted class president for her leadership. Steven Geiger has clinched the award for being top gun and the best evasive driver in the class. And Eric Anderson got the award for best self-defense maneuvers.
It's very, very time-consuming, late nights, early mornings, but at the end of the day, it's worth it.
One thing the LAPD brass are proud of, this class is so diverse, it mirrors the ethnic makeup of LA. The ratio of women does fall a little bit behind. There's four women out of this class of 32.
The makeup of African-Americans, Asians, Caucasians, Middle Easterns, Hispanics, it is a great makeup and it's well-balanced.
They will have to deal with events that nobody should have to deal with. As representatives of the people of Los Angeles, they will go into places that nobody should have to go.
Mayor Eric Garcetti asked the recruits to never forget the details.
And in every inspection I've done, there's usually at least one button unbuttoned or something that's off. This is the first inspection I haven't been able to find a single thing. Details can keep you alive in the field. Details can save your life.
Of course, I'm very fearful, but I'm also proud of him and so it's a combination of pride and fear, yes.
Today, it seems, the pride the families feel far outweighs the fear as they watch their recruits throw their hats up in the air and with that, become full-fledged officers ready for deployment on the streets of LA. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The recruits receive six months of intense training. While after 65 years, Panorama City finally has a new home for the Los Angeles Fire Department, Rich Samuels has more.
It seems that everyone was celebrating the grand opening of Fire Station Number Seven in Panorama City. Members of the community came together along with city officials and Los Angeles City firefighters for a day-long festival.
We have this beautiful building, really a reflection of this amazing community that I call my district.
Serving the communities of Panorama City, Arlita, Pacoima, Mission Hills, and North Hills, the 16,000-square-foot facility is more than seven times larger than the 1950 station it replaces.
I think the credo of LAPD is notably apt today, and it is dedicated to saving lives, fighting fires, safety and prevention, and building communities.
Diane Han used to live behind Fire Station Seven, back when it was based in the old building nicknamed "The Little House."
They're adorable. They've adopted me as their station mom, and I try to do everything to make them aware that their community loves them and thanks them for everything that they do. They deserve something nicer, bigger, more comfortable, and it's just, it's needed.
The $8.8 million station was made possible because of cost savings during the construction of fire and animal facilities under Proposition F, a bond passed in 2000. The new station now houses an engine and paramedic ambulance with room for two hook-and-ladder trucks. It's a new beginning for Fire Station Seven. This is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
This is the sixth station to be designated Fire Station Seven since the first one opened downtown in 1888. While a new annual tradition sails into the port of LA, a new crosswalk in the heart of Hollywood boosts visitor safety, and parking just got a bit easier in Westwood. All these stories and more in City Beat. The Port of Los Angeles will begin hosting LA Fleet Week, in which active military ships will be on public display during next year's Labor Day holiday, city leaders announced. LA Mayor Eric Garcetti, who's a Navy Reserve officer, said the event will be a great annual tradition for Angelenos to visit the LA waterfront, tour ships, enjoy a variety of activities, and gain a deeper appreciation of our enlisted men and women. A new scramble crosswalk was recently installed at the heavily-traveled intersection of Hollywood and Highland, allowing pedestrians to cross from all corners in every direction, including diagonally and simultaneously. Previously, the highly congested corner in the heart of Hollywood overflowed with pedestrians moving outside the crosswalks and sometimes in-between cars trying to make turns. City Councilman Mitchell Farrell, who spearheaded the transformation, said it will improve safety for the thousands of pedestrians who cross there each day.
It's a psychological boost. People feel safer, and you can feel it. When I've crossed there, it just, it feels a bit joyful, really.
O'Farrell also joined other local and federal officials for a ribbon-cutting and a walk along Sunset Boulevard and Echo Park to mark the completion of a streetscape improvement project that repaired broken sidewalks and curbs, planted more than 100 new trees, and saw the installation of several solar-powered Big Belly trash receptacles. The pedestrian improvement project, which was mostly paid for by a federal grant, is geared toward enhancing the look and feel of the neighborhood while making the area more inviting for pedestrians.
We encourage people to spend some time here and have a quality experience.
Mayor Garcetti and other LA city officials launched Westwood Express Park, the first expansion of LA Department of Transportation's real-time parking management and information system outside of downtown LA. The system uses in-ground sensors to determine when and where parking spots are available and adjusts prices according to supply and demand. Mayor Eric Garcetti says one of the goals is to reduce traffic congestion.
These sensors, LADOT can now track also the usage of the city's metered on-street parking and use that information to help us set the best parking rates, save us money again when things are low and to make sure we get the turnover we need when there's high demand.
It was a rare treat, a lineup of world-class musicians, singers, and dancers put on a show recently for a great cause, and it was free. Rich Samuels has more.
Drums and drummers are part of culture as the world over, and every year, they're celebrated here at the 34th Annual Watts Towers Day of the Drum Festival.
And it's in Watts, a place that everybody forgets unless there's a shooting or something negative, but we've been doing museum and art education for 54 years.
The Watts Towers Arts Center, built in the shadow of the iconic Watts Towers, shares the landmark's worldwide reputation.
Simon Rodea was a regular man. He built these towers all by himself for 33 years, so what it tells us is, if you stick to it, you can do it.
So I just, every year, I've just enjoyed coming to build community and listen to the great music.
Performance has been fantastic. This guy's been loving it. Actually, he's a little, he's eager to get back to it. He's enjoying the music and enjoying dancing to the music.
I'm a Los Angeles native and I cherish the multicultural traditions of Los Angeles.
The celebration didn't end with the drum festival. The free event continued the following day with the 39th Annual Simon Rodea Watts Towers Jazz Festival. From the Watts Towers, this is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
Both festivals were presented by the Department of Cultural Affairs and the Friends of the Watts Towers Arts Center. While with the gift-giving season here, LA Animal Services is encouraging people to adopt a pet, and at One Valley Shelter, choosing the right animal just got easier. Gil Reyes explains.
In the past, the big decision to adopt from a shelter could only be made from behind the glass or cage, but at East Valley Animal Shelter, you can make the choice in a living-room setting. New yellow couches where you and your potential pet can really meet.
Some people want a cat that's all over you, that's on your lap, that's on your shoulder, that's rubbing on your face. Some people want a cat that keeps their distance, so this way you can actually go in, sit for a while, relax, and find out exactly who the cat is.
How did it all happen? Well, basically, the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council put it all together. They had extra money in their discretionary funds and used it to purchase $5,000 worth of furniture, and now people can take their time while they consider adopting a pet. At the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the two newly renovated rooms, area councilman David Rue praised the residents of Sherman Oaks.
Government can't do everything on our own, and this is where we have collaborations and relationships with the local community and the local community stepping up, getting involved in your government.
With the holiday gift-giving season here, East Valley Shelter in Van Nuys is offering specials. Cats four months or older are free, dogs are half-price on weekends only.
You know, everybody loves puppies. What's not to love? They're adorable, but think of adopting a dog that's a little older, two, three, four years old. They're already past, you know, eating the shoe stage, they're trained, they're calmer, they make a great pet.
And if you don't believe us, meet a few of them in person and be sure to feel right at home. At East Valley Animal Shelter, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The city is also offering $30 vouchers for spaying or neutering. Pets of low-income residents can get the procedure done at no charge. While Marina Del Rey puts on a colorful display of holiday lights and two different shopping extravaganzas showcase both handmade and vintage items. All this and this week's Things to Do. On Saturday, December 12th, feel as though you've escaped to a small-town fishing village with the 52nd anniversary of the Marina Del Rey Boat Parade. Bring a blanket and gather around Fisherman's Village or the Burton Chase Park to watch as the 70 boats glide through the marina with holiday lights and decorations in competition. Categories include best theme, best animation, best band, best lights, and more. The festivities begin at 5:55 PM with fireworks, and the boat parade starts at 6:00, rain or shine. The Fisherman's Village is located at 13737 Fiji Way. For more, visit mdrboatparade.org. Reserve the second weekend in December for the Echo Park Craft Fair hosted by the 5,000-square-foot Max Senate Studios. The event welcomes artsy East Siders for a holiday feast of hand-dyed clothing and delicately concocted bath oils, one-of-a-kind ceramics, weavings, jewelry, and beyond. Founded by a shoe designer and a textile artist, the biannual extravaganza has grown from a backyard hangout to an artisan's haven, providing a number of local craftspeople a space to showcase their handmade gems. The fair takes place on December 12th and 13th at the Max Senate Studios located at 1215 Bates Avenue in Silver Lake. For more, visit echo park craft fair.com. From handmade goodies to vintage gems, in four short years, A Current Affair has established itself as the premier West Coast shopping event and is known for a curated, relevant selection of vintage from all eras. Currently held three times yearly in downtown LA in the penthouse of the Cooper-designed space, A Current Affair brings together more than 50 of the best vintage retailers and private dealers showcasing the best in vintage clothing, accessories, and jewelry. Check it out on December 12th and 13th. The Cooper Building is located at 860 South Los Angeles Street. For more, visit it'sacurrentaffair.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Cain. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hey buddy, doesn't this tree seem a little dry? And plugging too many lights in a single outlet can be dangerous?
Buddy, you overloaded the circuits end yourself. Next time, use the water for the tree.
How'd you know?
The ball, the ball knows it all.
Hi, I'm Chris. I'm an Ayahgar yoga teacher here in Los Angeles, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel. Namaste.
Sergeants, can you please call the members? We don't have a quorum. Good morning. Today is Wednesday, December 9th. And you are listening to the Los Angeles City Council. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Buzkaino, Sidhu, Englander, Fuentes, Harris, Dawson, Weiser, Carras, Kukorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Ruh, Wesson. Eleven members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Kukorian moves. Mr. Joe Buzkaino seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Joe Buzkaino moves and Mr. O'Farrell seconds, next.
Madam President, there are requests to continue items 1A and 1G to January 12, 2016, and 1N to January 20, 2016. Further, there is a request to continue item 17 to December 16.
Without objection, next.
Madam President, items 1 through 14 are items noticed for public hearing. Further, item 1J should be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid in full.
Okay, without objection. Mr. Clerk, do we have any cards on any of the items?
Yes, yes ma'am, we do. We have cards on items 1, 2, 5, 7, 13, and 14.
Members, any specials on items 1 through 14? Seeing none. On the remaining balances, close the public hearing and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next, Mr. Clerk.
Madam President, items 15 through 37 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items 16, 34, 35, 36, and 37 have been circulated and are before council for consideration.
Members, are there any specials on items 15 through 37? Mr. O'Farrell?
Madam President, item 36 special, please. And item 37, please hold the item on the desk.
Okay, we're holding item 37 on the desk. Members, any other specials? There's been a request to hold item 15. Fifteen. Are there any cards on any of the items, Mr. Clerk? Okay, great. On the remaining items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Madam President, that brings us to items 38 through 46. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objections, those items are before us. Mr. Clerk, do we have any cards on any of the items?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have cards on items 38, 45, and 46.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Members, any specials? Seeing none. Let's open the roll on the remaining balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next.
Madam President, that brings us to items 47 and 48. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Madam President. Item 47 is a settlement which can be approved in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Budget and finance consider the matter and recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. Item 48 will need to be considered in closed session.
Okay, let's hold on to 48 on the desk and we can take up item 47. Mr. Clerk?
Madam President, for item 47, in the case entitled Killings Rodriguez et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expand $15 million in settlement.
All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Item passes. Thank you, Mr. Kukorian.
Madam President, that takes council back to presentations or items called special.
Okay, let's move on to the presentation. Mr. Kukorian, are you ready?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Members, as we all remember, 2008 began a very dark time in the economy of Southern California. And many lives were disrupted as people in mid-career lost their jobs and, in many times, many circumstances, lost their hope. Because for many people who were in mid-career professionals, they not only lost a long-term position, but they lost any real likelihood of being able to get re-employed quickly. At the same time, we had spiking demand for services in our nonprofit community, at the same time that nonprofit grants and contributions were plummeting. So these three factors really created a very difficult circumstance for many people in need, in the San Fernando Valley and elsewhere. Fortunately, Los Angeles Valley College saw an ingenious solution to those problems. A way to bring together people with tremendous professional abilities with the nonprofit community in order to serve the nonprofit community and the people that those nonprofits serve, while at the same time allowing those people who are suffering career disruption to be able to renew and expand their skills and apply their time during unemployment in a way that was positive for themselves and their career advancement, while also being positive for all of the people that they were serving through these nonprofits and their volunteer time. And that program was the LA Fellows Program. Since 2010, the LA Fellows Program has given 315 individuals from around the LA region enhanced career development, increased leadership skills, improved network abilities, and so much more. The program is based around a learn and experience model that offers valuable opportunities to apply those longtime professional skills out in the world for those nonprofits that can really benefit from them, and then also the ability to expand those skills. To date, the fellows who've participated in the LA Fellows Program at Valley College have contributed more than 31,000 in-kind hours to local organizations and nonprofits. Eighty-eight percent of the people who participated in that program have gone on to accept paid positions within months of completing the fellowship. And many of them went on to accept positions with the very nonprofits that they were assisting on a pro bono basis. So it's just been a tremendous boon to the San Fernando Valley, the LA Fellows Program, and all of Los Angeles. And it's such a great honor to be able to recognize the LA Fellows Program, to honor LA Valley College for their dedication to people who have struggled through the economy. And now that we are emerging from the recession, it's really laid a foundation for continued success of these nonprofit organizations and career success for the participants. So it's a great honor to be able to be here to recognize the LA Fellows Program. And I'd like to introduce, as the first step in that recognition, I'd like to recognize the President of Los Angeles Valley College, Dr. Erica Andrew Jonas. Dr. Andrew Jonas?
Thank you. Thank you very much. But before I speak, before I speak, I'd like to offer the President of the Los Angeles Community College Board of Trustees, Scott Sfonkin, an opportunity to say hello as well.
Well, I was going to do that.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, President Andrew Jonas. I want to thank the City Council for recognizing what we do. And Valley College is a tremendous example of the fact that we help transform lives. We help take people like myself, a high school dropout, and give them a second chance. We help take people wanting to better themselves and get a good job and make a difference in the community. And you'll hear today one of those incredible examples. Being on the LA Community College Board is a tremendous honor, representing 5 million people across Los Angeles County. Today, you will hear about the best of LA CCD and what happens at Valley College every single day. They take people and make their lives better, give them a second chance and a chance at a better future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I am Dr. Erica Andrew Jonas, and I'm President of Los Angeles Valley College. And it is a great honor for me to be here to accept recognition on behalf of the LA Fellows Program. As you may or may not know, 50% of the mission of the California community colleges is economic and workforce development. But when people think about economic and workforce development, they're really not thinking about the types of students, the types of individuals that we help with LA Fellows. We're helping individuals who need to transition into a new career. These are often the underemployed or the unemployed for long periods of time. And it's such an honor to get to see a program in motion where individuals who normally would never have thought of work in the nonprofit field get there by way of a program that shows the importance of combining professional development with volunteerism. And it really is a win-win for our local community and for our local nonprofit sector. I'd like to first thank Councilman Paul Kukorian for his longstanding support of our program. He and his staff have been great supporters, and we really appreciate everything they do. And of course, I'd like to thank the City of Los Angeles Workforce Development Board and the City of Los Angeles Workforce Development Department for providing pilot funding six years ago for the first LA Fellows cohort. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge and thank the leaders, both past and present, at LA Valley College, who did the work on our end to make the LA Fellows so special. The first is Job and Career Center's longtime director, Mr. Lenny Shufau, who is just a rock star when it comes to economic and workforce development. He's actually really retired, but he keeps coming back to help us. He fails retirement consistently. We also have Allison Silver, who's really our boots on the ground, who makes it all happen. We have Dr. Doug Marriott, a statewide leader in cooperative education, who has now taken the lead on our LA Fellows Program. And also Dr. Deborah De Chesere, the dean, whose amazing creativity and efforts have helped a lot of things come to fruition. A president like a board chair likes to brag, and I'm no exception. In terms of this honor, the LA Fellows has also been recognized by Forbes Magazine, The New York Times, The Daily News, and we are on the White House watch list as one of six most promising programs. So our partners, our local economy, and everyone really benefits from our program. But we couldn't do it without your support and the support of everyone in Los Angeles. So again, thank you for this wonderful honor.
Thank you, Madam President. And Madam President, if I may, I'd like to allow the council to hear from a couple of the graduates of the LA Fellows Program to share their story. And first, I'd like to introduce LA Fellows Program graduate Derek Clemens. Mr. Clemens?
Good morning. I came to LA Fellows having worked in the television industry for 20 years, the last three years of which I probably worked three months out of each year. So I was desperately trying to find permanent employment and trying to change careers. And I had become very unsuccessful in my search. Until I found out about LA Fellows, I was reluctant to go to the orientation, but after going and hearing Allison, the director, say that she had formerly worked in television and had made the transition, I became very excited about the opportunity and told her to keep me in mind. And so when I was given the opportunity to apply and interview and was selected, I was overjoyed. The things that we learned in LA Fellows resume building, interviewing, those are all wonderful, but the main thing that we learned is the value of relationships. And so the relationships with my fellow cohort members, the relationships with the instructors, it really just opened the door for me to meet people from a variety of different professional backgrounds. That, in addition to my volunteer service, gave me exactly what I was looking for, which was just an avenue to pursue a different career. And so as a direct result of relationships that I made there, I have been employed with Goodwill Southern California for the last eight months as the Veteran Employment Program's outreach specialist, and I could not be more pleased. This program is as advertised, and it has changed my life. And anytime I get a chance to help push this program forward in any way, I'm always happy to do so. So thank you very much, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Clemens. Now, I'd like to invite another LA Fellows Program graduate, Jan Cher, to share, Jan Cher to share her story.
Hi, good morning, council. First of all, I'd like to say, when I, a few years ago, I found myself in a position I never thought I'd ever find myself in, and that was being unemployed and not being able to find work. I did every avenue that I could. I tried everything I knew, but I couldn't find work. One day, I found a flyer about LA Valley Fellows. And I said, I'm going to look into this. So I did. With Allison's, everybody's help, Mary's, I ended up being accepted to the program. That program not only taught us many things, but it gave us the confidence to go back out again and sell ourselves and be there and find the work that we wanted to find. I ended up doing my 100 hours at Lisa Ann Rouge Byrne Foundation. I went there and I worked, I worked there, and I did as the instructor said, be the shiny penny that you are. Show them what you can do. And I did. Nobody had given me that opportunity before. And with this, from there, within a short period of time, they hired me part-time to work at the Lisa Ann Rouge Byrne Foundation. Six months later, they hired me full-time. Since then, I've been able to not only prove what I can do, but to take on so many other programs. I've been able to do so many things, grants, help people. And that's what I always wanted to do, was to help people. So through this and through our program of LA Valley Fellows, working with nonprofits, I was able to accomplish something in my life that I've been able to do. I thank the program. The program is awesome. I thank you for allowing for this great opportunity. It is, it's just my world, and everywhere I go, I speak about the LA Valley Fellows Program, because it is such an opportunity for so many who have lost hope. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cher, and thank you, President Andrew Jonas. Thank you, President Sfonkin, for being here and your recognition of the fellows. To all of the administration of Valley College and the faculty, to the participants in the fellow programs and all of the cohorts, thank you very much for really creating an innovative workforce development program that serves our community in so many ways. You've really made a tremendous difference in the lives of countless people. And for that, it's a pleasure to be able to represent the City Council in presenting you with this certificate, this resolution, rather, signed by every member of the City Council. And thank, with our deep thanks and appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian. Congratulations to all of you. Mr. Clerk, let's send item 33 forthwith.
Very good, Madam President.
And let's move on to item 2.
Very good. That's item 2, called special for cards. Madam President, furthermore, the department recommends that 2A be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Without objection. And let's move on to item 2. Mr. Walsh? Are you here? And as far as this item is concerned, item two, as you know, we're—a—this concerns relative office of finance requesting approval of record liens against taxpayers for unpaid taxes. Again, when you do a good job, I'm the first to congratulate you. When you're racist and you do a terrible job, I'm the first to condemn you. In this case, you're doing an excellent job. John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. There are no more cards on item two. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item five.
Item five, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Previn, item five, sir.
Then we have a VIP on the VIP section today. Eric Previn from CD2. Thank you. Item five is—we're actually—Lawa, the airport group, is re-upping with one of their trusted law firms, who they've been using in a protracted litigation that will be finalized in January 16th—or there will be a trial, I guess, in January 2016. So Hagy Law Group is the group. They—you may recognize the name, because they are also on the SEQA land use panel that Mike Fier put together, a bunch of panel attorneys that can help out when the city needs to crush any opposition from a community group at the expense of the applicant or the developer. The city will simply set them up to do that. So that's unfortunate. So Hagy Group here, though, is working hand-in-hand with the airport interest. Now, this group has received $3.5 million since 2010, between 2010 and 2014. We're gonna get a good number on 2015, because none of that was included in the number that I just quoted. This is just a deal to extend for six months on this one case, and it's for 340 grand. So, you know, you have to think these things through. There's a lot of work to be done. Why we're having an environmental law pig-out, legally speaking, at the airport that's been there for 30 years is an interesting question, obviously, because we have so many needs. And this is a group that obviously is working very closely with us. I'm sure we're being sued by someone, and I will look into it and report back on that. But, you know, it does raise some questions, because this group now is getting—if it did the math—it was 3.325 through 2013 on this case. Since 2013, it's 1.6 million. So that means 1.7 million increase since 2013. So that's more than a half a million a year for this group. So I don't know. They may be doing a really great job. They may be very sharp lawyers, but this just—this is just amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. That concludes cards on item five. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item 15. On item 15, Mr. Clerk, public comment has been satisfied. So let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 4 noes.
That matter passes.
Indeed, that matter passes. The next item is item seven.
Item seven, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Previn, item seven, sir.
Yeah, I'm sending it forward. Madam President, can I send 15 forthwith, please?
15 forthwith for Mr. Englander. Item seven, Mr. Previn.
Thank you. Item seven is the receivership panel? No, it's not the law firm—group of law firms who are on a panel to fight our receivership issues. No, okay, it's item seven, right. Okay, my mistake. Item seven is a—one of these lighting districts. Here, though, what I've noticed is—I think it's a further—a little bit further along down the line. This one is for—let me get the address for you—Woodman and Valerio in CD2. This one, I think we've already heard the protest. So this one, we're going to simply deny the protest. So I don't know if that means somebody actually protested or not. I assume they did. Typically, what happens is you have a senior and a junior member of this lighting district. The senior is the one who has the control and always wins, and therefore, the junior has to eat whatever they agree to, is my understanding. And this one is past the point of no return, and I'm gonna stop it one minute, because it's a very dry subject. The one question that I've asked the city to report back on about those lights, the smart poles or whatever, I've heard nothing. So hopefully, you could, and then that would dispense any myths or, you know, bullshit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. There are no more cards on item seven. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item passes. Mr. Clerk, let's move on to item 36.
That brings us to item 36, called Special for Councilmember O'Farrell.
Mr. O'Farrell, are you ready for item 36, sir?
I am. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I just want to highlight something that we are doing in terms of arts and cultural affairs across the city of Los Angeles. Upon taking office, I reached out to our colleague, Jose Wezar, and we really felt it was important to unlock the arts development fee that had been in limbo for seven years, meaning for seven years, millions of dollars weren't going toward art projects and cultural installations and across the city, which really is counter to what we, you know, believe in—in—in the arts community. And we all know that a—a thriving arts community make for a world-class city, and Los Angeles was being deprived all those years. So through the course of lots of activity and collaboration with the Cultural Affairs Department and our offices, we did work together to develop a—a process, an expenditure plan, and working with the city attorney's office as well. And we developed a process, and we reopened and reinvigorated the arts development fee and unlocked it last year. This year, in Arts Parks Committee—River Committee—we took action, and we approved a package of art projects totaling $1.65 million to be spread across all council districts. So we once again could have beautiful murals, beautiful sculptures, beautiful artistic performances, funding nonprofits across the city for greater artistic expression in this great city of ours. And that's what this decision will do today. I am so proud of working with our Department of Cultural Affairs, and led by Danielle Brazel and Felicia Feiler, and—and many others, who really provided the teamwork to help make this happen, and all of you as well in—in our offices, because we all understand the importance of art and culture in the city of Los Angeles, and how, through artistic expression, things are explained that government otherwise can't. And that's the beauty of art. It helps explain who we are as a city, who we are as a culture, and that's the beauty of what the arts development fee can do. And it will be something that gives for years to come, every year. So in the coming years, we'll see great projects across the city of Los Angeles because of this—this action that we're taking. Dynamic public art in neighborhoods and communities across the city, as I mentioned, Promise Zone grants through the Promise Zone and Promise Neighborhoods, Art Activation Fund, et cetera. It will be the guidelines that help provide the way forward in years to come, and I couldn't be more proud of this accomplishment. And—and it really did take a great collaboration that I think is a wonderful example well into the future, and really, here's to the arts in L.A. as never before. And in this time of incredible growth and development with billions of dollars of being invested in the city of Los Angeles, is there really a better time to have such wonderful resources be expressed through the arts with this wonderful resource and funding? So I ask, and urge, and I vote, so we can move this forward and we can just keep creating great art across the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, and public comment was also satisfied on this item. So members, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item passes. Thank you. Fourthwith for Mr. O'Farrell on item 36. Let's move on to item 13.
That brings us to item 13, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, item 13, sir.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, using up my third minute. This concerns protest against the maintenance and improvement of the Winnetka and Parthenia street lighting. The street lighting program is very good compared to what we had 25 years ago. Technical upgrade has been excellent. I'm not—I think you're charging too much to the landlords. Remember, the landlords pass this on to us with our yearly rent increase, 4% or 5%. Other than that, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Hunt, item 13. Is he here? Michael Hunt, you're not in the room? Well, that concludes cards on item 13. Mr. Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item 14.
Item 14, called Special for Cards.
Hunt? Michael Hunt, are you here? He's not here. Let's move on to Mr. Previn. Eric Previn, are you in the room? Followed by Mr. John Walsh.
Good morning, Council President Wesson and Council. It's Eric Previn. Item 14 is a report from the Budget and Finance Committee relative to the 2015-16 appropriation limit. I—so that means—it's a little bit unclear to me, but we are going to adopt $4.78 billion, I'm rounding, as the appropriations limit for 2015-2016. I was not able to glean enough information as my preparation on this one, so I was wondering if I could defer my time, and somebody who knows what this is could just simply say, "Okay, we're setting the rate for the city and for the state," you know, so that we could understand what it is, because it is a teeny bit confusing. I—I mean, I—it seems very procedural, and I don't want to get in the way of the smooth and orderly business, but I—perhaps one of the techier numbers-oriented, Krikorian or Blumenfield could just say, "Okay, fine. This is nothing to worry about. It's just—you know, we don't see $4.7 billion on the agenda very often, so I'd appreciate it. It's our appropriations limit." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh passes. That concludes cards on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next item, item 38.
38, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh passes on item 38. There are no more cards. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item passes. Item 45?
45, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, item 45, sir.
This is another offer of reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, and conviction of—for the shooting death of Gennaro Ochoa on May 18th. This—I'm glad that—that his relatives didn't come down here, because you torture their relatives when you come—when they come down here. And again, I have asked for how many awards—rewards you have paid out, and I got, for Mr. Caretts, one reward in the past 20 years, and it was for a white man who ran over a Jewish person in front of Century City. So if your victim is a wealthy Jewish guy, the cops are gonna put out—the cops are gonna put some effort into this. But when the award is for someone whose last name is Ochoa, you don't have—these rewards are evil, twisting, to make it seem like—the cops are more interested in shooting down people with Hispanic names in their neighborhood than in finding who did this. A gang member did it. It was a gang fight. The reason we have so few murders here in L.A. compared to Chicago is because the Crips and the Bloods signed a truce. Now, it doesn't always hold, but that's why—now, in Chicago, the gangs have not signed a truce, and the city is out of control. And that's why I would like to thank the Crips and the Bloods and the other gangs that signed a truce and are not killing one another at the rate which at one point was about 10 times what it is now. And they know me, because I'm a substitute teacher. I taught them in elementary school. HollywoodHighlands.org.
There are no more cards on item 45, Mr. Clerk. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item 46.
46, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, item 46, sir. Walsh, I'll remind you, you only have one minute left.
Right. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is a half a million dollars. It's—it says here, "For accepting the sum for community benefits." What this does for the large developers is allow them to buy these little bits and pieces of property around their development that are owned by the city. It's a sweetheart deal. Remember, all they want to do in Hollywood is build, build, build. And of course, remember, the half million dollars goes to wealthy Asians who put the money in—in—in this half a million, although I can't find where the half million dollars is coming from. But remember, if you're black or brown, you're not welcomed by the racist mayor of the city in Los An—in Hollywood.
Next speaker, Mr. Previn, on item 46. Previn, I'll remind you as well, you have one minute left.
Uh, no, no, because I only took one minute on the other one.
Sir, you have one minute left? Item 46.
Okay, whatever. This is the community benefit. Thank you to the applicant for providing so generously here, about a half a million dollars to the Mobility Trust Fund. Of course, when you look closely at the language, the community benefit that was supposed to be—is supposed to be delivered not to exceed 2 million, so this may be one of several payments. We always try to extract community benefits from developers when we can. Out at, you know, 20,000 Prairie, where Mr. Englander's living and working and playing soon, we've got 660 units. I double-checked with planning, and Mr. Marquise Dawson will know, will confirm, there are zero affordable units in that 660 rental facility that he'll be generating out there in the west part of the valley, in the Granada Hills. I mean, it's—you know, we have to hold these folks to something more substantial. Those board of supervisors yesterday at item two, look at the agenda.
Mr. Previn, you're not speaking on the item.
Talking about—I'm talking about community benefit for—
Thank you, sir. That concludes cards for item 46. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Item passes. Let's move on to item one, Mr. Clerk.
Item one, called Special for Cards.
On item 1F, David Walker?
And Madam President, in the meantime, there's been a request to continue item 1B, as in boy, to January 12, 2016.
Very well, without objection. Mr. Walker, good morning.
Hello. I'm here today to request a postponement for this fee that I have, for a notice fee for building and safety. I live in and own this house, and I've been in severe financial hardship— I live in and own this house, and I've been in severe financial hardship, and I was hoping to get a payment plan or a postponement or something that'll help me get this paid so that I can stay in my home.
Okay, sir, this is one—one-F. Can you repeat the address for us, please?
Two-nine-four-two Tyburn Street.
Okay, very well. We're gonna get a staff member—you see this gentleman right here? Wave. He will speak to you at the ropes.
Thank you.
And we're gonna hold this on the desk.
Okay.
For the meantime. Thank you. Next speaker is Kenneth Egan's on item one.
Good morning, Madam President and members of the council. I'm here representing Brown and Associates, the attorneys for Asher Enterprise, and we're just entering an objection to this lien because they had no notice of the lien or the underlying violation, and they're just also requesting about sixty days to look into it, find out what's going—
Sir, can you give me a minute? What's the address that you are—
Oh, I'm sorry. The address is six-four-two-two North Lindley Avenue.
Six-four-two—six-four-two-two North Lindley, okay. We're gonna get a staff member, uh, to speak to you in just a second. We're gonna hold your item on the desk, and this young woman here that you see walking towards you, she will speak to you at the ropes. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, we're gonna hold this item on this de—desk as well, so let's move on to item—to public comment at this time. Sean? You ready? This is public comment.
Uh, Sean Murphy, uh, my concert is Sunday at St. Charles Barmaio. You guys are welcome. Seven P.M. Joe, spread the word. Let's keep our sidewalks clean, our gutters cleaned—I hope they are, because the rains are coming next month. Thanks.
Thank you for the invitation, Sean. Mr. Walsh? Public comment.
John Walsh. Uh, yesterday, I was—I started doing this in nineteen seventy-two in Berkeley. You know, it's over forty years. I have never had a—someone up here curse at me. Never! But yesterday, I was vilified and cursed at by one Board of Supervisors meeting. It's on the tape. They're running it tonight on Channel thirty-five. You can find it. Sheila Kuehl cursed at me, and then she led an attempt to have me thrown out of the meeting. Don't listen to what I say, see what happens. They had all the votes ready, and then Hilda Solis asked the county council, and the county council said Mr. Walsh was not disruptive. You can't throw him out of the meeting. And I want to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that you—and what was I talking about? I was talking about terrorism. We have welcomed a hundred thousand Syrian refugees to this city for shame!
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. The next speaker is Michael Hunt.
The Red Chief Hunt on the record, folks. I want to say, I guess it's Good Wednesday because Ms. Martinez, you're always president. That's a good thing for me. I really like you and respect you as president, Madam President.
Appreciate it.
Um, here again, if you guys think I'm going away, I'm not. And if you guys think that I won't file in federal court, I will. And if you think that I'm letting you guys off the hook, you guys are not. And number three, you guys don't have to have added security. I got you guys back. Ain't—ain't nobody coming up in here while I'm here, so I—I guarantee that. And for you guys' safety is—is number one to me as an individual, because my safety is important, too. Uh, number three, get your business in order, 'cause the Red Chief Hunt does not play with anything or anybody. Thank you, the Red Chief Hunt.
Thank you. The next speaker is Eric Previn.
Thank you, Council President Martinez. It's Eric Previn. Uh, on December fifteenth at two-thirty over in the Public Works Meeting Room, they're going to have a hearing on the Sportsman's Landing project. There've been some appellants, apparently, and that is going to go before just the little, uh, public, uh, Planning Committee. Uh, but I would request that the city council hear, uh, that eventually when it comes to council. Ordinarily, you'll say it's satisfied in—in the little room, but I would—I would ask, because it has been controversial—this was the one, for the record, that included the forty-two-thirty Coldwater Canyon fire house issue that was a little bit of a kerfuffle, and the other, uh, issue with the neighborhood council being very close to it. So I think it's appropriate that all of the council members have a chance to, uh, you know, hear from the various, uh, both sides. There will be obviously controversy—there always is on these things—but to bury it in a committee is completely unsatisfactory for the individuals who want to raise the, you know, flags to the other council members in the districts who may not know anything about what's going on in Studio City or North Hollywood. So I appreciate that, and with that, I would ask you to open the camera so that we can see the public.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Next speaker, Antonia Ramirez.
Thank you very much. The most jealous, nosy, uncivilized, wicked, gang-stalking, come-caca, violent heckmongers are wetbacks and chungo latino gang-banging filthy thieves and pussies, and they think they are entitled to everything, including free subsidized housing, welfare, free education, and all medical benefits. Pinches muertos de hambre. The second most racist, gang-stalking, violent, heck-mongering thieves are blacks from Africa, Jamaica and Haiti, and African-Americans, who think that they are above the law and deserve provincial treatment. The LAPD and the Sheriff's Department's hands are tied. They will not serve and protect the legal law-abiding citizens because they have a chokehold around them by the unethical, corrupted, and unscrupulous ACLU, Kamala Harris of the Department of Justice, and L.A. District Attorney Jackie Lacy, and the United States Attorney Loretta Lynch. Um, and Ren—and again, the pandering pussy, County Board Supervisor Mark Ridley Thomas, and ex-Eric Holder, who are all black and vindictive and implement the double standard protocol and retaliate against us.
Next speaker, Michael—carry on.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to remind the public that as of ten minutes after ten, Mr. Weezer got up and left and has not voted on any one of these, uh, things that you've passed, unless he's in the back sleeping. Uh, I've been speaking with Mr. Weezer's office for the past ten years, trying to get a retainer wall done. He keeps telling me that Nancy Wax, city attorney, doesn't return her calls in a timely fashion. It takes two to three weeks, maybe over a month, to get a response from her. Now, either Nancy—Nancy Wax isn't doing her job, or Mr. Weezer's office isn't doing her job—their job. Somewhere in this city, somebody's got to be accountable. So as council members, you guys got to figure out who it is. People are gonna get hurt if this retainer wall doesn't get done. Mr. Weezer's office has been working on it for ten years, and he keeps saying, "Oh, we're—we're here, we're here." I think he's lying. He did it before, he'll do it again.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Oscar Mohammed, followed by Juan Alcala.
Yeah, uh, my name is Oscar Mohammed. I speak for the press, I speak for the struggling poor, and I speak for culture change. We should end this dogmatic, inhumane leadership that we have in—in Los Angeles today. We should move the black America homeless—or the African-American homeless people from down Skid Row. But in—in Skid Row only invite more failures, because I've read once upon a time that they said beware of new—new—new invention and old invention go. That is called creative destruction. It seemed like the creative destruction had put America in hellfire today. But anyway, and Mohammed, the prophet, he said similar to that. Beware of new intervention, because new invention leads to hellfire. But anyway, uh, we should bridge political responsibility. We should accept more responsibility in Los Angeles. If there's anything in Los Angeles that is forbidden, it seems like there's not. We have no boundaries with anything. We should bridge, respect responsibility in—in our region. We should, uh, we enforce the laws that we have that make America a better country.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Alcala?
Well, I don't know if you noticed my absence, because I've been driving under the influence of my brain, and my brain tells me that you're a bunch of liars, crooks, and et cetera. And my brain told me that I can tell Donald Trump to go fuck himself about a million times in one minute. I just gotta train my brain to—to get there, you know? I hope Donald Trump gets nominated, so nobody wins. The whole world will be destroyed by that motherfucker. Anyway, uh, Krikorian, he's an asshole, too. He, uh, he's like a damn goat that's been bothering me for a while, and it's my turn to say, "Krikorian, go fuck yourself." And next time you interrupt me, uh, I'm gonna fart on your face.
You are not—Mr.—Mr. Alcala, you cannot refer to a specific board—council member. Thank you. Mr. Alcala, I will have you removed. You need to take your seat, please. That concludes public comment. Mr. Clerk, can we return back to item one? Sergeants, can you please help me with Mr. Alcala in the back? He's disrupting our meeting.
Enough. Madam—Madam President, there has been a request to continue items one-K and one-F to January twelfth.
Without objection, and we'll vote on the remaining balance on item one. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you. Now, sergeants, can you please help me prepare the room for closed session? We're gonna go into closed session for item forty-eight. I apologize to our guests. I've—I just—I saw that you guys just sat down, but we're going into closed session, so we need to clear the room. but we're going into closed session, so we need to clear the room.
[Music]
Okay, we're back in open session, members. We have two votes before us on item 48. Mr. City Attorney?
The first vote is whether to pay settlement in the case entitled PC versus City of Los Angeles. There's a number of payments, and I'll just recite all the different payments. There's $870,000 to Janete Solis. There's $1,500,000 to PC. There's $400,000 to SJP. There's $400,000 to EE. There's $710,995 to the law offices of Dale Galipo and law offices of Umberto Wizar. And $250,000 payable to Dale Galipo.
So that's before us now. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Next vote, Mr. City Attorney?
All right, and then the second vote is to determine whether to pay the $45,000 to indemnify police officers $45,000 in punitive damages based on the following factors: whether the officers acted within the course and scope of their employment, whether the officers acted in good faith without actual malice and in the apparent best interest of the city, and whether that payment of the judgment would be in the best interest of the city.
Okay, that second vote is before us, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
That concludes the two items we had to vote on, item 48. Let's move on to...
In fact, I'm sorry, Madam President. And for the record, on the first vote, the vote in closed session was slightly different. It was 14 to nothing with only Councilman Wizar absent.
Very well, let's move on to item 37. Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Item passes. Mr. Englander.
Can I just reconsider that last item?
Do you want to reconsider item 37?
Yeah.
Hold on, it's vote on reconsideration?
Yeah.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
We did wait for you, by the way. Mr. Kocori?
Mr. Englander, because I actually had wanted to propose an amendment, so I appreciate you doing that. We were moving with such efficiency that I didn't have a chance. But I would like, before Mr. Englander speaks to his point, I would like to offer an amendment to recommendation number 13 in the Budget and Finance Committee reports. I'd like to amend that recommendation to add, instead of the positions indicated, to add one senior personnel analyst, one personnel analyst, two, and one senior administrative clerk for a total of three new positions under recommendation 13. Then I'd also like to ask that the CAO, I'd like to add to recommendation 14 that the CAO report back to Budget and Finance on workload indicators in the Personnel Department and whether additional positions may be necessary mid-year or if additional positions might be proposed for the coming fiscal year. So with that amendment, thank you, Mr. Englander.
Mr. Englander?
Yeah, more of a statement than a question, and it really relates to the homeless appropriation and the rapid rehousing, veteran rapid rehousing, the winter shelter programs. Just want to make sure and put it on record that we want to make sure the valley is recognized in that as well and that the San Fernando Valley, being a big chunk of the City of Los Angeles with 1.6 million residents and a growing homeless population, is well-served. One of the recent reports that came out is that one of the reasons it's so difficult for the homeless folks in the San Fernando Valley to find any shelters because there's simply lack of services. And so I want to make sure that the message gets sent to include a fair portion to make sure those services are spread out citywide as well because there's a need citywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Englander, for that note regarding the valley. I just wanted to make a clarifying comment, which I think can be taken as a friendly amendment, with regard to the rapid rehousing program, which are 12-month programs. This, currently it's set to begin January 1st. I want to put forward if programs can be up and running sooner, we should be able to fund them starting today, and we want to get people in housing just as soon as we can. So I'd offer that as a friendly amendment as well.
And, Madam President, both amendments would require seconds.
Hold on for just a second. Who's seconding, Ms. ...?
I'll second both.
Okay, Mr. Weston will second both?
I think we all.
Mr. Sadio wants to second too?
Mr. ...
Mr. Weston will second both?
Those are all really friendly amendments.
Thank you.
Which Budget and Finance is delighted to accept.
Too much, too much funliness. Mr. City Clerk?
And for clarification, Councilmember, the rapid rehousing program would apply, as it would appear, to recommendation number 10 of the Budget and Finance Committee report. Very good.
We're good? Okay, great. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
We will send it urgent forthwith. Urgent forthwith. Let's open the roll for urgent forthwith.
For the findings.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Madam President, the desk is clear.
Okay, let's, members, any announcements? Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the fourth floor today, Red Cross is having a blood drive that I'm sponsoring until 3:00. Anyone who hears this and is eligible to provide blood, please do so. We certainly need it. You never know when you're going to need blood, or an emergency may occur. And I want to thank our colleague, Marquise Harris-Dawson, for donating this morning already. Thank you, Marquise. Fourth-floor media room until 3:00 p.m. today. Thank you.
Any other announcements, members? I just want to send my condolences to my executive assistant, Lisa Flores, who lost her mother-in-law this week. May our prayers be with her. I don't have any details yet, but you all know who she is.
Madam President, I'm sorry. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer. Let's please stand for adjourning motions. Excuse me, sir, we're doing adjourning motions. Can everyone please rise? May I, do I have any adjourning motions to my right? Seeing none to my left? Mr. Sadio?
Yes, incredible, iconic figure of Los Angeles has passed away December 1st, 2015. David Von Lee, who was born near Chinatown in 1920. He's the quintessential success story of the immigrant child, of Chinese immigrants who were here, came to help build the transcontinental railroad, helped unite our country. In 1931, David was sent back by his family to boarding school so he could remain in touch with his family, his cultural heritage, but also as kind of the advance for his family should they be part of those who were excluded as part of the Chinese Exclusion Act. This is important as the lessons of today as we operate within a moment of extreme xenophobia, anti-immigrant ...
Okay, we're back in open session, members. We have two votes before us on item 48. Mr. City Attorney?
The first vote is whether to pay settlement in the case entitled PC versus City of Los Angeles. There's a number of payments, and I'll just recite all the different payments. There's $870,000 to Janit Solis. There's $1,500,000 to PC. There's $400,000 to SJP. There's $400,000 to ED. There's $710,995.60 to the law offices of Deo Galipo and Law Offices of Umberto Wizar. And $250,000 payable to Dale Galipo.
So that's before us now. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Next vote, Mr. City Attorney?
And then the second vote is to determine whether to pay the $45,000, to indemnify police officers $45,000 in punitive damages based on the following factors: whether the officers acted within the course and scope of their employment, whether the officers acted in good faith without actual malice and in the apparent best interest of the city, and whether that payment of the judgment would be in the best interest of the city.
Okay, that second vote is before us, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That concludes the two items we had to vote on, item 48. Let's move on to...
In fact, I'm sorry, Madam President. And for the record, on the first vote, the vote in closed session was slightly different. It was 14 to nothing with only Councilman Wizar absent.
Okay, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Item passes. Mr. Englander.
Can I just reconsider that last item I...
Do you want to reconsider item 37?
Yeah.
Hold on, it's vote on reconsideration?
Yeah.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. We didn't wait for you, by the way. Mr. Kukoryan?
Mr. Englander, because I actually had wanted to propose an amendment, so I appreciate you doing that.
The President is very quick.
We were moving with such efficiency that I didn't have a chance. But I would like, before Mr. Englander speaks to his point, I would like to offer an amendment to recommendation number 13 in the Budget and Finance Committee reports. I'd like to amend that recommendation to add, instead of the positions indicated, to add one senior personnel analyst I, one personnel analyst II, and one senior administrative clerk for a total of three new positions under recommendation 13. Then I'd also like to ask that the CAO, I'd like to add to recommendation 14 that the CAO report back to Budget and Finance on workload indicators in the Personnel Department and whether additional positions may be necessary mid-year or if additional positions might be proposed for the coming fiscal year. So with that amendment, thank you, Mr. Englander.
Mr. Englander?
Yeah, more of a statement than a question. And it really relates to the homeless appropriation and the rapid rehousing, veteran rapid rehousing, and the winter shelter programs. Just want to make sure and put it on record that we want to make sure the Valley is recognized in that as well and that the San Fernando Valley, being a big chunk of the City of Los Angeles with 1.6 million residents and a growing homeless population, is well-served. One of the recent reports that came out is that one of the reasons it's so difficult for the homeless folks in the San Fernando Valley to find any shelters is because there's simply lack of services. And so I want to make sure that the message gets sent to include a fair portion to make sure those services are spread out citywide as well, because there's a need citywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Englander, for that note regarding the Valley. I just wanted to make a clarifying comment, which I think can be taken as a friendly amendment, with regard to the rapid rehousing program, which are 12-month programs. This currently it's set to begin January 1st. I want to put forward, if programs can be up and running sooner, we should be able to fund them starting today. And we want to get people in housing just as soon as we can. So I'd offer that as a friendly amendment as well.
And, Madam President, both amendments would require seconds.
Hold on for just a second. Who's seconding, Ms.? Okay, Mr. Weston will second both. Mr. Sedio wants to second too. Mr. Weston will second both.
Those are all really friendly amendments.
Thank you.
Which Budget and Finance is delighted to accept.
Too much, too much fun in this. Mr. City Clerk?
And for clarification, Councilmember, the rapid rehousing program would apply, as it would appear, to recommendation number 10 of the Budget and Finance Committee report. Very good.
We're good? Okay, great. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
We will send it urgent forthwith. Urgent forthwith. Let's open the roll for urgent forthwith.
For the findings.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Madam President, the desk is clear.
Okay, let's, members, any announcements? Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the fourth floor today, Red Cross is having a blood drive that I'm sponsoring until 3 o'clock. Anyone who hears this and is eligible to provide blood, please do so. We certainly need it. You never know when you're going to need blood or an emergency may occur. And I want to thank our colleague Marquise Harris-Dawson for donating this morning already. Thank you, Marquise. Fourth floor, media room until 3 p.m. today. Thank you.
Any other announcements, members? I just want to send my condolences to my executive assistant, Lisa Flores, who lost her mother in law this week. May our prayers be with her. I don't have any details yet, but you all know who she is.
Madam President, I'm sorry. Council has motions for posting and referral.
Post and refer. Let's please stand for adjourned motions. Excuse me, sir, we're doing adjourned motions. Can everyone please rise? May I, do I have any adjourned motions to my right? Seeing none to my left? Mr. Sedio?
Incredible, iconic figure of Los Angeles has passed away December 1st, 2015. David Von Lee, who was born near Chinatown in 1920. He's the quintessential success story of immigrant child, of Chinese immigrants who were here, came to help build the transcontinental railroad, helped unite our country. In 1931, David was sent back by his family to a boarding school so he could remain in touch with his family, his cultural heritage, but also as kind of the advance for his family, should they be part of those who were excluded as part of the Chinese Exclusion Act. This is important as the lessons of today as we operate within a moment of extreme xenophobia, anti-immigrant hysteria, and a whole range of other phobias. It's important to note, this is the contributions that immigrants bring to this nation. David returned to Los Angeles in 1937, where he attended Central High School my father went to, and Lincoln High School, while also attending Chinese school and working in the Family Restaurant. He was a World War II veteran who served our nation in the U.S. Navy. Together, he and his brothers re-entered the restaurant business and established the iconic Ma Zhen Lo. It's the House of 10,000 Treasures, which gained success and renown, but it's popularly known as General Lee's. And all of us have had the privilege of being there, General Lee's in Chinatown Central Plaza. David was just a simple iconic leader of this region, friends of judges, business leaders, dignitaries, elected officials, mayors, recognized as a natural leader of the Chinese-American community, was head of the chamber since elected in 1976, and brought a new era of Chinatown and Chinese-Americans in our city. He served for 30 years as president of the National American Chinese Association of Southern California, and continued afterwards in the capacity of advisor and consultant amongst his many civic positions. He was on the Airport Commission for acquisitions and liaison for the Chinese Olympic athletes. He served as host to many dignitaries, foreign delegations, was here for the opening of the Chinese Consulate General's Office in Los Angeles, founder of the Los Angeles Guangzhou Sister City Organization and really served, recently served as their chairman emeritus. He's just an icon, a living legend, and at the young age of 94, he has left us. Services will be held at Forest Lawn, Hollywood Hill North, Old North Church, in Forest Lawn, Hollywood Hill, December 17th at 12 noon.
Thank you, Mr. Sedio. Any other adjourned motions? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.